I'm John McGlaughlin.
Cindy Toll.
Ken Basingsinger.
Okay. My...
You are.
Yeah, really. Okay. The discussion items, the first one is elections for Chair and Vice Chair.
So, new year, we need elections for Chair and Vice Chair, but since we do not have two of the five members, we can choose to move this on to the March meeting and retain our Chair, Dawn McGlaughlin, or Vice Chair, Ken Basingsinger, for the time being. We can vote again. It's up to you, but I was obligated to put that on as a... Because we have to either do keep the interim situation or vote for new for 2011. As we recall, Mr. Island will be stepping out in June, and we will be reappointing somebody to fill the architect position, and I'm just about to notice it out to the architect community. And it's already been sent out by Nancy Iddner on general notice. So, we will be looking for someone for June. But the person most likely would not want to be Chair of us here. So, you may choose to wait till Vicky gets back, Mercedes gets back from her trip, or you can choose to vote right now.
I think you'd be more fair if we did.
I don't care. I wouldn't disagree with that, but Vicky would vote the same way. We're all gonna vote for John.
Actually, either way is fine with me. I don't care.
I'll leave it to the direction of the board. You can... There's two options tonight. I mean, you have to choose one of two. Vote to keep interim for last year's, until you choose a new one next month, or vote for 2011.
It's just trying to figure... I don't know what they would say. Or would you wait for Vicky? Can we wait till next month?
So, we just need to go tonight to keep the interim... Or to keep Dawn as Chair and Ken as Vice Chair in the interim until a new Chair for 2011 is chosen.
Right, and that may be next month, but it may not.
Yeah.
But it probably will.
So, you motion that? I move we table this until next month and continue on an interim basis in the meantime with the officers.
All right, Cindy Toll?
Aye.
Mr. Basingsinger?
Aye.
Chairman McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, second item is 2011 work program.
Yeah, I have it pretty vague, because I'm kind of looking for your direction a little bit. We do not have a sort of local government grant for this year. We're on a biennium basis now, and so we will not be applying for this next year. We are currently doing the 2011 survey program with last year's grant. So, that'll be finishing off, you know, this spring and through the summer. But next year, we will not have a CLG grant program. We will be working our darndest to get additional money through the Metro Enhancement Grant Program this spring to keep our Preservation Grant Program alive. So, that'll be something I'll work with you. And I'm also soliciting all the previous grant recipients to turn in kind of paragraphs or sentences of support. I'm gonna put together all that and have a big dog and pony show for the Metro Enhancement Grant this year. It sounded like when I was gone last year maternity, we just barely missed the threshold of funding. So, I'm hoping if we really just put out the stops and talk about the reasons for the preservation program and really play at the green aspect and retaining wood windows is one of the greenest things you can do and key into the National Trust Window Repair Program and kind of throw that whole thing in. And also as a way to counteract our demolition denial and demolition by neglect programs, kind of do that whole package. I'm hoping that we will get funded this year. If we don't get funded, then we definitely know we need to go and find another funding source. But I...
Who's your audience committee?
The Metro Enhancement Committee. Well, we last year, we requested 10,000, did not receive it. They had $100,000 with the grants. And what they do is they generally just... They rank it and they fund it until the grants, until you run out of money. So, let's say there's 20 grants and each grant ranges between $5,000 and $15,000. He'll just add up the rankings. I think we were, whatever the one or two was below the last one that didn't get funded. So, it sounds to me that they still ranked us reasonably. So, what do we need to do to push ourselves up in the ranking? The year before that, where we did receive $10,000, we were just on the other side of that line and did get funded. So, we kind of are in that mid-funding range, so...
I thought photographs of all the houses thing.
A full court process is what I'm thinking. Because if we don't... There could be a larger discussion about what the purpose of the Metro Enhancement Grant, do city programs need to get involved, should city programs be involved? Did it just be in a reservation as a stroke review board, technically a city program? We have all these kind of philosophical questions the Metro Enhancement Committee is dealing with. And I'm going to try to throw all the positives further out then and let them kind of sort through. So, that's gonna be what I'll be working on this spring. Metro Enhancement deadline is May. So, this next kind of March and April, I'll be trying to solicit as much information and letters of support for previous grant recipients as I can and put a package in altogether. And I'll definitely need at least one, hopefully more, board members asked the night of that meeting just to show a kind of support for the program. It'll be a late May meeting.
You mentioned the demolition denial. Could you give me a quick review of the process that a citizen goes through?
Sure. We've got two, and one's been resolved and one is soon to be resolved. And I have one about to be potentially going through. If anybody can turn in a demolition by neglect request for further information. What happens is first, as staff, I would get the request.
I mean, if a citizen wants to take down a building...
Oh, okay.
And applies to the demolition.
Oh, if someone wants to take down a... Apply for a demolition permit anywhere in the city, they would go to the Building Division. However, if you fit into a certain category, being if you are located in the McGlaughlin Conservation District, the Kanema National Register District, or your landmark, there is a stay of your demolition permit until... Or denial of your demolition permit until it goes through this review process. And as of the summer of 2009, the Stroke Review Board can use the criteria for demolition to deny that demolition. And that would then be working with the property owner through the demolition by neglect process to get it up to stabilization. The Board can also approve demolition of a historic structure if the applicant meets the criteria. But it's based on criteria now as of 2009, and it's not a delay of demolition, which it was previously.
A person called me on the phone because I'm on the Board and asked about that. And I didn't tell him anything wrong.
And the demolition by neglect, anybody can turn a demolition by neglect in, but it takes the first step, the building official has to come out and confirm the demolition by neglect status. And then it goes back to the Board for an official hearing and, you know, and judgment that it does meet the demolition by neglect standard. So, a little bit of a process.
So, what is the status of the two demolition by neglect?
The first one, the Beamer Way properties, has been resold and a leased property in our own good and has been working on rehabilitating it. They had some extensive mold damage, but it sounds like that's been mitigated. The second, the Captain Cochran House in Kanema, is currently up for sale and I'm...
It is sale pending.
Yeah, and I've been working with the potential property owner on the first steps in which talking to the building official is a new route.
Weren't they working on the Beamer one, like even last spring or something? Or someone, I mean, so they've been working on...
Yeah, yeah. The Beamer Way property has been officially removed from demolition by neglect.
We voted both of those at the same time. It's been quite a while.
Yeah.
The... There's also a third property that I met with the building official last week, and it seems like it hasn't reached that threshold, but it is a foreclosure. So, we're letting the bank know about potential issues if it moved to the next stage. So, that's the spring work program. But really, this is all of 2011 and, you know, a little bit of next year. So, my question to the Board is, what do you feel are programs that you think or have that the Board should be addressing? These could be policy questions the Board should be addressing. This could be process, you know, questions maybe through a work session to look at, you know, how we can better the stroke review process. This could be stroke review education for the stroke review board. I can bring Carrie Richter in to look at... And she could do a presentation on preservation topics and legal issues, looking at complete education of the Secretary of Interior standards, for example. We could do a more community education. I mean, those are the kind of issues of what do you feel is the most needed, either through a work session or outreach on an education level? What would you like to see that to be not being met now? Which would probably happen in summer or fall.
The only thing that comes to my mind, and it's only because I had personal experience when I was working with...
The Building Division?
Yes. Thank you. Because I... When I questioned whether I should talk to this or review Board about an issue that was brought up during inspection, oh, I wouldn't bother Christina about this. Now, a regular homeowner that isn't on the Board that wouldn't know, even know about this, would... The whole thing would bypass the HRP. So, I think there needs to be historic sensitivity when they call out requirements on additions to historic buildings that may fall into that same category.
You could have a work session with the Building Department, with inspectors, with, you know, Scott and Danny and Bill and all those guys. You could say, you know, just say, here's some issues that could come up, or do you know that? I don't know. Maybe something that there's... Because if there's... There could be potential for, you know, the communication factor between the Board and what happens historically in those. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I know our building official, Tom Hosey, I mean, I don't know if we can ask the whole department to attend a HRP work session, but I mean, I... We can definitely set up a work session and have a conversation with our new building official, Tom Hosey, and maybe to bring, you know, maybe one other person from the Building Division if we wanted to be commercial or residential.
Part of it is, the building official might know, but it's the person at the counter who's issuing permits and, you know, bring it up. It's a historic issue. It's, you know, it's just kind of like the disconnect there was with the chain link fence. There was like a big disconnect, and so it became kind of icky for us.
Well, the chain link fence and the sash limiters, there's always a disconnect when we have, as a city, criteria and regulations that are triggered regardless of a building permit. Because when things require a building permit, you can go in, request a building permit, and you can find out. But things like fences, things like the sash limiter, which normally is just a sash replacement, but in Cindy's case was as part of a larger project, those are the things that fall through the cracks.
Right, and that's the hard part, yeah, the cancer.
But we could have, we can have a...
I don't know if that would... I don't know.
We could have... I mean, I'd like to do more, use our work sessions for more education-based. You know, like, what are all the ways that we fall through the cracks and that things that don't require a building permit and how can we better provide information to restore property owners about that? These things still, you know, require some review. So, that, I mean, that's definitely, I mean, it could be a work session.
We're still grappling with whether people are gonna come to us in the first place for a historic review when they do work on their property. They actually some... They get guided from the Building Department and saying, oh, you're his... You know, if they catch it, your property's historic, you gotta come here first.
Well, they definitely come to me first. And another one is what... Process for staff approval of exterior alterations, something that we can have discussion. There are some, you know, legal ramifications of that. The Stroke Review Board guidelines do allow staff to do minor exterior alterations without requiring a notice review. It has worked well. Some cities do consent amendments. So, that's kind of a discussion of how you want to see staff review of, you know, small alterations on historic buildings.
Well, that always brings up the question that if it's something that should be discussed, is color. It's quite frankly, if someone comes in for a building permit and they want to do something to the house and it's a historic property, somehow, and it works in Westland, somehow, the Board or something is very subjective. We've talked about this in circles, but color has to come in to play somewhere there, I think, whether it's a historic palette, or I don't know if that's allowed or if it needs to be implemented. I don't...
Yeah. Well, and I guess the question is, what I've... The direction I receive from the State Historic Preservation Office is that they have felt that color, at the end of the day, does not adversely affect the long-term historic integrity of a building. So...
Adversely affects the value and character.
But that, I guess, that's where you have to kind of... And this will happen a lot of times where the State Historic Preservation Office may say, what is being done does not adversely affect that historic structure, the integrity.
I would totally disagree with that.
Right, but the long-term integrity of it. But the community's values and guidelines may say, no, we want to take it to the next level. So, SHPO is always looking at what's adversely affecting the integrity of the structure. So, the paint color is not making the building fall down, is not removing historic materials. Those are the things that SHPO is looking at, not changing the context of, you know...
I think it does, because if I see a beautiful Victorian that has this putrid lime green color on it, I think it just destroyed the property.
I think what they're saying is if you're painting a previously painted building. And so, it's the one thing, and this might be maybe an education, I go, what? How does the State Historic Preservation Office, maybe the Secretary of Interior, look at these historic buildings? And when do they defer to a local jurisdiction's values when it comes to additions, new construction? So, there's two ways to be looking at it. The Secretary of Interior is kind of a threshold of, you know, this, don't go below this. But the community can say, no, we value... We value all of our additions to be more replicant, and not the complete replicas, because that obviously wouldn't meet the Secretary's standard. But you could say, we want our palette to be more really specific, really prescriptive about the colors, the materials, the architectural style. I mean, very prescriptive. A community could do that. A community could also... No, you'd have to be a homeowner associated.
I'd write, I'd even mind having a work session, just talking about how, because if I had a soapbox and I didn't want to change something, I would want to implement some sort of a color palette.
Okay. But ultimately, a community could also allow really modern infill. So, both of those are options a community could do, and they're both historically appropriate. And so, I think what made it interesting, education of what's the threshold, the Secretary of Interior's threshold, the SHPO's threshold for not adversely affecting the historic significance? And what's kind of the greater area of where a community finds its own path?
Well, it just popped in my head, and it's probably a happy medium that can be implemented. But anytime something comes up, we could say, hey, we can't tell you how to paint this, but here is Benjamin Moore's historic colors. Look at these things. Maybe is this a dish? Look at this or something, because, you know, that Benjamin Moore thing that comes out is period. You know, every period. And it's like, maybe we could just always make the suggestion, but obviously can't force them, but say...
The only thing I can do is we could just make a work session on color, and I can do some research on what jurisdictions have chosen to do, what we haven't chosen. Move on a list serve. We could develop just a whole night to color and what we want to do about it.
Yeah, I don't know. It's always something that comes up, you know, it's like...
Do you ever drive 99 West through Dundee?
Not for a long time.
There's a house there that is bright purple.
Oh, yeah.
It caught your attention, I guess.
It's bright purple because the owner got in a beef with the city authorities over something else. And the thing that he couldn't do to spite them was paint it that obnoxious purple.
Yeah, and that's a converse argument, is that what SHPO says is there's so much controversy in regards to historic preservation. And they felt that like, that is... And that may be different compared to someone who's coming in, you know, or like, new construction has some color palettes. But, you know, the existing condition and alterations, I think that's when it gets harder. Unless you have 100% just full support by a community, it's hard to impose non-land use colors.
Well, I was gonna say that we can guide, you know, and suggest to them, but I don't think we can legally tell them.
No, you could. You'd have to go through an adoption process. I mean, there's an arm to get there if that's a value and a something you want to go down. What I can do in this night, you know, the night we devote to color, I can do is just kind of lay out the different options that the Board can look at.
I hate to see the lime green or the Dundee purple or the chrome yellow, like down at New Era, just show up in the middle of Kanema one day.
All right.
Without any authority over it.
Then the community could get together.
I don't think the community cares.
Yeah.
I don't think they would after the session.
Right, and what I can do is I can kind of spell out all the issues relating to color and how are different ways you could regulate color? And here's the spectrum of options here, the pros and cons of it. And we could have a nice, good discussion about...
Yeah, I don't know. It might be something or two. It's always a real gray sticky area sometimes.
But it's also nice, for some reason, the Board chose not, or chose to keep existing condition. You'd be more informed in why you did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Anyway, I can't think of anything else.
Anything else you'd like to tackle this year in regards to education or public involvement or...
We have a suggestion from the crowd.
Hopefully, it doesn't get any more numerous than you. Let us see your name.
Yes. Paul Edgar, planning Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. I've... We've talked about it in Kanema Neighborhood meetings, and this was an area of lands that you could only get to in Kanema from, let's say, the interior hillside streets. So, you come up usually, or you're coming up Third Avenue, and you start to, you loop into Fourth. But there are lands that are in Kanema that are not in the historic district, but they have dramatic effects upon the historic district. And you can't get in, you can't get out, period, electric going through the area. So, it's these lands that in the past we have thought should be conservation, historic conservation lands, so that they go through a historic review process. They're not part of the historic district because of when it was laid out, but they're part of the Kanema Neighborhood and Neighborhood Association lands and responsibilities. And they have direct effect upon the perceived district and the values of the national district. So, it's in that area, it's like expanding the conservation district to those contiguous lands. So that it... That responsible review takes place so as to not degrade the historic district inventory. And that's trying to think it through, how to do it. But that, and on color, my wife has talked about taking our 1880 house and painting it barn red, historic barn red. And of course, I like white, but I only have half a vote.
You have no vote. Yeah, you can deal with that. There are all those issues. But I like barn red.
But anyway, so...
That's a good idea.
So, but when you're looking at that stuff and somebody says that, if my CEO says that she wants barn red sometime, you know, I would hate like hell to try to argue with that.
Yeah.
But I try to talk.
But that could be something that could be talked about is...
Yeah, but I think it needs to be talked.
Specifically, are we talking about this outside?
I think what Paul is referring to is the properties off of Fifth Place that are having, currently have four semi-improved lots that are for sale.
Okay, yeah. And then there's lots right across the street from you.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And along Fifth Avenue that are all...
On the uphill side of Fifth Avenue, a lot of that property is unimproved, has basically sewer and water to it, and could be easily developed. But it's outside of the historic district. But it's right around it, you have historic houses. And it's part of, when you drive in, if you're coming in from South End Road, everybody sees it. So, it's what should be an appropriate design. John Smith owns one of these lots, you know, just on the other side of the driveway going up into his big property. And that is not in the historic district, and it's kitty corner from my property.
Did you know that?
Okay, so, if we were to count up the number of parcels that are already pre-subdivided, well, you know, 1862, in 50 by 100 lots, we probably have 20 lots that are, that could be developed that are, that were planted, but not brought in under the historic when Kanema was brought in. So, that could be developed. And they could have adverse effects. And I have something that I brought in that I will get a chance to talk about.
Yeah.
No?
Uh, well, you know, if I could comment back. I think Mr. Edgar's point, as he is, kind of two issues. One is kind of the background history of why a National Register District had the boundaries created and kind of the implementing authority of the Stroke Review Board to review only historic properties. And then if you have, and this happens McGlaughlin as well, if you have bordering areas, who's the authority, who's reviewing it, how is it created?
She talked about a month or so ago.
Yeah, so, I mean, it definitely can be a work session, but there's, you know, there's legal issues. And then if there's community desire to go, you know, to address the legal issues, there may be a path. But that, this definitely warrants a work session answer or...
I have a, I printed out and have over here for you the Oregon statutes, the Oregon Revised Statutes on it. And as you read through it, I asked an attorney to read it with me. And the attorney that read it with me came back with the assumption that virtually Kanema is a historic place by connotation, legal connotation, and that means above the ground and below the ground. And so, in a sense, it goes back, and then you start to tie to it, that the linkage is to it, as to what is contiguous. And does it degrade the integrity of the associated...
Right.
Does the activities on associated lands contiguous? Associated lands degrade the integrity of the historic place? And when you read the actual Oregon code, which in a sense supersedes virtually local code, because it creates, it's something that needs to be read. And so, I gave it to David Fraser today and said, would you please run it by Ed Sullivan? So, as Ed or somebody who has a higher legal authority. But what it means is, we have, when you read the Oregon Revised Statutes, it really gives you guys a heck of a lot more latitude to intervene on these things than maybe has been done in the past.
Well, we could definitely talk about it. It gets into a pretty sticky, open area.
It is.
And it's something that, I mean, we can make it a session and talk about it. But we're also talking about things in the future, may or may not. But, um, we're also talking about things in the future, may or may not, and what can be inclusive? And did you open up a whole other ball of wax for historic designation and all that stuff? So, anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks. Um, I saw boards over the windows.
Well, we're not there yet.
Yeah, maybe we could.
So, I mean, before I.
Oh, go ahead.
I do want to, I'll bring this back in the next month, a work session.
Yeah.
Um, but is there anything else you'd like to see, you think either process, your own education, or a piece of historic preservation, uh, background and education that you think you're missing? Or you think you could context? Because we do have Carrie Richter and we do have people from SHPO that can come up here and, and do a presentation about a lot of issues. And if you don't think something needs to be fleshed out, that you don't quite, you know, fully grasp the concept. And this is definitely, education is definitely a part of our work session. So, do you sell historic properties as a realtor?
Yeah, we just listed the, uh, you just listed the, uh, Elizabeth Clark with or without an E.
Oh, the, the brick. Uh, so do you have any questions that you can't answer?
Sure.
I'd be something.
But not on that one. Except, should it have the E or not?
But you don't have to, this is not the final list, but maybe think this next month.
Sure.
You know, oh, wow, you know, that would be a great, you know, half hour presentation on, on this topic. Because I think, you know, they're also, uh, streamed on video. So if you think there's a, a topic that the community might want to learn more about, you can, you know, it'll be streamed or whatever, not just yours.
Is it, I mean, would it be bad or wrong to educate the board on? I don't know if it's a matter of paying somebody to come in, but a window dude to come in and say, here are the, the, you know, we always prove these things, we see pictures or something, but we don't actually, I know what they are, but it wouldn't hurt to say, here's the methods, here's what people are coming in to do, and here's what we, you know what I mean? See a slip method, you could see, you know, the storm, does that make sense? Have a, I mean, is it possible to pay somebody to come in for an hour? Or do you pay them? Or do you just say, can you volunteer your time to come in?
Well, I would hope that the firms that have been, have used preservation, I mean, have hired clients with preservation in the past. Hopefully we could ask them if they wanted to come.
Yeah, like that France guy or something, or Choson or one of those dudes.
Um, I mean, I can put a call out for, uh, you know.
Wouldn't hurt for a work session if you're, if that's possible.
Yeah. What we do work session, kind of different businesses and what we do and what we get.
Yeah, I don't know.
You can ask specific questions.
That would require us going, moving in, taking you to us.
Adele does make windows, it's repair, but.
That could be a possibility to go to a guy's workshop, you know.
Well, site visits is nice. The problem with site visits is to open to the public. So someone has to say, I'm okay with, you know, the public coming, so.
Probably wouldn't be adversely opposed to it.
Usually the public involves, do, through people who have come, but, you know, it is, yeah, it's like, I'll. When I, uh, when we meet next month, I'll, I'll write this list up and we can kind of go through it. And you can kind of rank, this is more important than this, and we can take a look at the next steps.
Okay.
All right, Ermattinger House update. Denise Kai and Scott Archer with our Community Services Parks Department have hired, um, an engineer to be looking at the structural stability of Ermattinger House. And we just this afternoon received the document and it'll be going to the City Commission. And as you can imagine, uh, we have a lot of money involved in the, um, people's stabilization. And, uh, what the, um, I think we're willing to put in the next direction of the City Commission, and it should happen very soon, in the next week or two. And then I, uh, we can get the board involved in kind of the next steps of, um, how the board can get involved to help. You can squelch that. I'll have to wait till the board, the City Commission.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Well, then we can adjourn.